We'll call to order the Lewisville Town Council meeting for August of 2014.
If you would come forward, please, Scouse.
All right.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, Troop 752. It's our custom at each of our council meetings to call the role, by doing, by calling the role, we actually introduce you to our council members. I'm Dan Pugh. It's my extreme pleasure and honor to be your mayor. To my immediate right is our Mayor Pro Tem Sandra Mock, followed by Councilmember Ed Smith. And tonight, we have an absence. Councilman Jeff Zinger is out of town and unable to be with us. To my left is Councilman Robert Green, followed by Councilman Mike Horn and Councilman Dr. Ken Sadler. We have our town staff members with us tonight, led by our town manager, Mr. Hank Perkins, our town attorney, Beau Howth. Ms. Joyce Walker is our town clerk. Ms. Kathy Bruce is our finance officer and assistant town manager. We have Ms. Lynn Hall, who is our public information officer and events supervisor, and Mr. Marty Myers, who is our town planner. It's also our pleasure tonight to have with us two members of the press, Ms. Lisa O'Donnell and Ms. Elizabeth Cruz. Thank you, ladies, for being with us tonight also. We do have also, as you can see, Lynn is on the recording device, we have, we're recording this meeting, as we have been in our past meetings, for playback on Channel 6, the government channel. And we certainly welcome the Lewisville citizens that are watching and participating by that method. So with that, we have tonight's agenda. There are copies available on the table in the rear of the chambers if you'd like to follow along. We, I think the agenda is everything we've covered or pre-notified by...
Yes, the only addition was the addition of the presentation that we have to Deputy Sam Bonilla.
Okay. All right. With that, council, if you've had a chance to look over the agenda, as we say, it was as approved at our briefing session with the amendment. What is your pleasure?
I make a motion to approve.
Second.
Do I have a second? Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the like sign. Okay, we have unanimous approval of tonight's agenda, and we'll start with the manager leading us through the consent agenda.
Okay, this evening, we have three items on the consent agenda. The first is Resolution 2014042 for the acceptance and approval of monthly financials for June 2014. Next is the approval of council briefing and action minutes from July 3, 2014, and lastly, the approval of council meeting minutes from July 10, 2014.
Any questions of the manager concerning any of the three items that are on the consent agenda for tonight's meeting? What's the pleasure of council?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All right. No further discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the like sign. Okay, the consent agenda passes. That brings us to the third item on the agenda, which is introductions, presentations, and our proclamations. We do have with us tonight two of our deputies, led by our corporal in charge, Deputy Chris Davenport, and we'll let you make the introduction, please, Pugh.
Hi, your counsel. This is Deputy Sam Bonilla. He's been with the South County Sheriff's Office just a little over a year. Recently transferred to the town of Lewisville. He's also a member of the National Guard, you know, the weekend duty, and two weeks a year. He does really good work for us. We're really happy to have him. He's also fluent in Spanish, which we don't have a lot of Spanish-speaking people in our community, but the ones that we do have have enjoyed having someone that they can speak with at ease, and someone that understands what they're trying to say. But we're excited to have him, and I think the town will be very happy with his service to him.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Very nice to have you with us. We look forward to getting to know you. We know that you've been around a little while and had some, I guess, guard duty that kept you away from us, but we're very pleased that you're on board, and we thank you for your service and certainly for your work and your efforts in Lewisville.
Sure, thank you. Definitely excited to be here. Definitely enjoying the town, great place. Love the people here, love the way, it's definitely homey. Definitely a big family here, definitely excited to be here and look forward to stay here.
Well, thank you very much, and we're counting on that, keeping it that way. Very good. Thank you, Chris.
Thanks.
Sam, good to have you with us. That brings us to item number four, which is the public forum. As I mentioned earlier in the welcome, that we have two opportunities for those in the audience to address council. It could be on any subject. It could be on something that's actually on tonight's agenda, or it could be something that's just near and dear to your heart, and you want to make a statement or bring forward an issue to the council. What we ask is if you want to address council at this time, that you come forward to the podium, that you speak into the microphone, that you state your name, your address, and we do ask that you keep your comments to three minutes or less. This is a time that you share with us. We don't engage in debate or conversation, really and truly, but we want to hear from you as to any of the items of issue that you want the council to be concerned with or to be notified of. I don't have anyone that's signed up. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to address council at this time? Okay, having no takers, would remind you, there are forums at the back if you want to submit written comments. That's a method that we use also. With that, we'll close the public forum and go on to the next item of business.
Okay, under new business, we have appointment order 2014005. This is for the student leadership appointments and resignations. Most of these are on reappointments.
Is it, it's in our drop box?
Uh huh.
Did we want to...
There they are.
We want to call the names, or did you just want to take this as... Would you like to do that? I haven't got my bifocals adjusted to the small print yet.
Reappointments to the student leadership will be Miles Kabian, Rebecca Gillan, Lucas Godwin, Samantha Godwin, Abby Hill, Chase Hill, Mandy Hill, Madeline Johnson, Alex Porter, Savannah Steed, Jorian Stevens, Mosha Talent, Ally Thompson, and Ethan Thompson. The following resignations have been accepted or will to be accepted. Rebecca Bennett, Kylie Blevins, Toria Stevens, Quay Whitworth, and Henry Robel. We are also appointing Zoya Thompson for her first year.
With that list for our student leadership committee, what's the pleasure of council?
I make a motion to approve.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor of these appointments, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. The, I guess, the student leadership committee is intact and ready to go for this coming year. And for information of the public, Ms. Bruce is the staff sponsor of that committee, and she works extremely hard with these students in teaching them and getting them acquainted with how municipal government works and how the system works overall. So Kathy, we appreciate the time and effort that you put forward in that, and I think it's been this extremely successful program for the town of Lewisville. Very good. Thank you again. Next item?
Okay. The next item on the list is to consider the request for the Lewisville Historical Society to amend the Coltech Drainage System and Grading at the Nissen House. And for those of us in the room who may not be familiar with this, this Historical Society has been for the council, and they've addressed the need to do certain things to the property in order to get it eligible for listing in the National Registry of Historic Places. And one of those is to get the grading of the front yard up to a certain level. As we know, the property where the Nissen House currently is has a drainage area in front, in the front yard, that is immediately downstream of the town's Coltech system, which is a BMP that serves a lot of this area. They have proposed, through work with a very reputable engineer, Mr. Carl von Eisenberg, a system that he has designed utilizing rip route and perforated 30-inch pipe to replace the drainage area with a graded system that will then handle the water coming out of the Coltech system. Last month, the town did do peer review using another engineering firm, and last week, it was discussed at council briefing that the peer review of the Coltech, the drainage system that Mr. von Eisenberg has proposed, does have the support and agreement of the peer that was done under the peer review. So the question before the council tonight is to decide whether or not the town is going to give its blessing for the Historical Society to move forward with this grading and the amendment to the Coltech system for the town.
Mister Attorney, do we need to take this?
This would be a simple motion.
And, okay.
To accept the proposed drainage system and grading.
Okay. And I so move. Do I have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion concerning this particular item?
One thing I would, Mr. Mayor, say is that in our discussions last week, it was verified that the changes to the system will have a neutral effect on drainage, and so stormwater management will not be affected positively or negatively. It'll essentially be the same as it is now and have no adverse effects downstream beyond what would have occurred anyway.
Okay. Yeah, thank you for adding that information, Dr. Any other discussion? All right, we have a motion and a second for, to accept the request to amend the drainage system and the grading. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that request is granted.
Okay, item number two is report from the Special Projects Review Committee reporting the recommendations on a request from the Lewisville Historical Society for a donation of $50,000.
Okay. For the benefit of the audience, we have a committee within our council that actually reviews and reviews applications for certain projects and for grants that the town might become involved in. It's made up of, as I say, council members on the sitting council. It's this year's, or this term of council, we have, the chair of that committee is Mr. Robert Green, and the other two committee members are Dr. Sadler and Jeff Zinger, who's not with us tonight. So the application has come before that committee, and it's been taken under consideration. I think the chair has a report that he wants to give to council.
The Special Projects Review Committee met at its regular scheduled meeting this past Thursday, August 7th, following the briefing meeting to discuss a request from the Lewisville Historical Society for a $50,000 donation to this phase of the Nissen House project restoration, which has a total estimate cost of $101,207. A number of items were being done for this project, including removal and replacement of the front porch, restructuring the stormwater basin in front of the house, facet changes, and grading. According to the Historical Society, the estimated total cost of the Nissen House restoration is expected to be approximately $600,000. To date, the town has donated $35,250 to this restoration project. After much discussion, the committee recommends the following to the council. Contributions to the Historical Society in the amount of $45,450 to assist in the completion of the drainage project at the Nissen House property. Two, the contribution is in the form of a reimbursement for work completed, inspected, and certified, specifically as receipts are produced validating the payments of grading not to exceed $37,900. Finished grading and seeding not to exceed $6,000, and the engineering not to exceed $1,550 have been made. The Lewisville Historical Society will not be eligible for requesting additional funds from the town until the town's total contribution represents no more than 15% of the total estimated $600,000 cost of the project has been raised by the society. This donation of $45,450 will bring the town's total donation amount to $80,700. We ask that these specifications be in the resolution of acceptance by the council.
And be in this is the resolution that he refers to?
Okay.
Mayor, move approval of the recommendation of the Special Projects Committee.
Second.
Okay. Is there any discussion, the council? One thing is, you know, we actually have a contract. The property is actually, belongs, the lot itself belongs to the town, and the, I guess we've had a contract in place. Does it need to be altered or addressed, these changes addressed in it?
That'd be a separate matter for the town to consider, need not consider that tonight. There is an existing lease and an existing purchase option that are outstanding at this time. Whether or not the town may wish to modify those agreements is probably a subject that we ought to take up at another time.
Okay, very good. Okay, we do have a motion and a second to accept or to grant the stated funds for this project. Is there any other comments or questions from council?
Mayor?
Yes.
So what you're actually doing is accepting the resolution?
Okay, which is 2014-044, is that correct?
Right now, because that, no. First, they had to accept the recommendation, and that was what they made the motion on. So that's what you have to vote on now, and then you will do the resolution. Is that right?
After that.
They did the motion, they passed the motion, accepting the proposed...
Now they're ready.
The resolution, the motion on the floor is to accept the special grant committee recommendation that we make as award.
Right, and then after that, they'll do the, well, that's what this resolution is.
All right. The resolution is the recommendation.
Voting on the resolution at this point.
If we vote on the resolution, that's all we need to do, is for, is accept it, and then we'll do a budget amendment to follow.
Yeah, correct.
Yeah, okay. Is that clear to everyone? All right.
Call the question.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the passes unanimously, and next is the...
Mr. Mayor, I might also, excuse me for interrupting, but I'd like to say that also council member Zinger was in favor of this resolution.
Oh, okay, thank you for...
Of the recommendation.
Yeah. And let the record show that, please, if you would. Okay, that brings us down to then the, how we're going to pay for it, so, which is the budget amendment, ordinance 2014-041.
And this is amending budget ordinance 2014027 by awarding a contribution to the Lewisville Historical Society in the amount of $45,450 for the work that was discussed from the Nissen property.
Okay. What's the pleasure of council?
Move approval of the budget ordinance.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion or comments? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the like sign. Okay, the ordinance passes, and we want to congratulate the Historical Society for your fine work. We, I think we've been a good partner to you over time, and I think, hopefully, that you understand fully the conditions of the grant of this funds. So we wish you the very best of luck in your future endeavors with the Nissen House. We hope that we'll be hearing soon, and I don't know what the timing might be on the National Register for that, but we know that that will be something that you've been working very hard to achieve, and we trust that this is going to play a part in it, and that we look forward to hearing about those results. Thank you. I think that takes us to our next item.
Next area is unfinished business. There are none this evening. Moves us into administrative reports. And then first, if I can find my list, we'll go over events at Shalford Square and holidays. For this Saturday, actually, we, in the evening, we have our first, well, probably not first concert, but we do have a concert this evening, that evening. And then following that, September 1st, we will be closed for Labor Day. Then on September 5th, 6th, and 7th, which is Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, will be the first week, weekend of the play performance at Shalford Square. This fall play is Once Upon a Mattress. And then following that, the next week, on Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, the 12th, the 13th, and the 14th, there will be the second weekend showing of the same play.
Very good. And I think, you know, just to reiterate the event this weekend, it is a present, or a performance by some local artist, the Williams Brothers. And I think if you know the family, if you know these two young men, they are extremely talented. They've been in our area for a long time. They've participated in many of the other events that we've had, playwalk musicals at the square. So I think it will be an evening of great entertainment to our community, and it's free. All you do is bring a blanket or a lawn chair and enjoy the fine performance. Okay, brings us down to approvals at the recent briefing meeting.
Okay, we have three things for the approval of the briefing meeting, and then I do need to add that we need to get some direction related to this material, but we'll go through the material that we covered last week. The first was Resolution 2014040. This was authorizing participation with the North Carolina Department of Transportation in enhancements to the Williams Road Bridge. The next was the ordinance 2014040 authorizing, or amending the budget ordinance 2014027 in an amount of $218,000 to provide funding for the NCDOT to make enhancements requested by the town to the Williams Road Bridge. And lastly, we had Resolution 2014041 requesting funding assistance from the General Assembly for the Williams Road Bridge enhancements. And for those of us in attendance, what we are doing is, as many of us in this community know, the DOT is now embarking on a project to replace the bridge, and they're going to be starting that project January 1st. As a part of that project, the town has discussed the bridge and its importance to the community as a gateway coming into town, and what it says about the community of Lewisville for people who come to visit. We have been provided the opportunity to participate with additional features that are add-ons on top of what the DOT would normally do for the project. These are going to be aesthetic enhancements to provide for a better-looking product in the end. And what we're talking about in the community that we're working with are powder-coated painted rails on the top, decorative parapet walls on the sides, a sidewalk running down one side of the bridge, and then a conduit for electrical lines that may be run in the future to supply pedestrian lighting up near, in proximity of the bridge as well. Related to that, and I hate to hurt everybody's head with this, but after we finished this work last week, we do need some more specifics for the DOT, and I've put some materials in front of you at your stations. Make the sidewalk easy. The recommendation for the sidewalk, as far as the pattern for this, would be a brick-colored pattern in a herringbone, and this would be a duplicate pattern for the sidewalk for the existing roundabouts on each end of the bridge that are there right now. The next that we have, that we had some discussion at council briefing on stone versus brick, we were provided before the meeting what a stone wall looks like. I was able to find examples of brick work. On page two, what you see is a couple of walls, but those walls is, DOT has explained to us, each one of those panels that make that wall up is by itself a parapet wall. You would just end up with these rectangular sections lined up, but the pattern would be the same. And then lastly, I came in and gave everyone an additional piece of paper separate. This was one-third item that had not, or a possibility that had not been discussed with council previously. The very top larger picture in the single page I laid at your station shows a recessed panel parapet wall. That is also available. The patterns for the walls and the parapet walls will be patterned on one side. You will only see the pattern on the exterior of the bridge, not interior to the bridge. And in both cases, the, for the brick work itself, as well as the stone, the DOT is recommending that we do color and color and paint or add color to the walls itself. The brick wall, if the town chooses it, would be color-matched to the sidewalks. Now, talking to Pat Ivy and Matt Jones, they are recommending that we do paint or stain even the stone walls, but that would be sort of a neutral rock color, and they do that because even if you're thinking that it's concrete, depending on how production is done on concrete, you can get variations in the tint and tone of concrete that can be discernible from people that pass by. So they did say that possibly it would get into a nominal increase to cost, but not much, and they wouldn't worry about it this time. The thing about the paint, even on the... on the brick, is that this is a single color. We will not be talking about painting individual bricks or the, the mortise joints in between. So that's where we are right now. Before we talked last week, it was the choice of whether or not we were dealing with the stone wall, the brick pattern wall, and now the recessed panel. So really, I think that unless you want to do differently on the sidewalk, we'll go with the herringbone sidewalk as, as far as the pa, the pattern in it and the brick color, and then we just need some direction to give to the DOT regarding the parapet wall.
Now, to, to clarify, we've got, these resolutions and ordinances, they've already been passed.
Yes, sir. This is just now providing the necessary details for the DOT to add specifics to what we want.
And this is just by consensus of the, of the, the council at this point in time?
Yes, it is.
For these various options, okay.
We get one, we either get this, or we get this. We don't get both, right?
No, it's gonna be either the stone, the brick, or the recessed panel.
Okay, so we either get this wall looking tight.
Correct.
Or we get this, which is below the bridge.
Yes, it is. Or, or the recessed panel.
That's all the recessed panel.
Okay.
I knew where that one was going.
Let's go over that again. As to what's what.
The brick pattern, I've given you two pictures of, of these apparently just brick walls. The point is that you just see the pattern in the brick. Those rectangular shapes would be oriented, those would end up being rectangularly in single file. They would represent the parapet wall, but the pattern to the brick and the color is what, what we're talking about.
The retaining wall across the top.
That's correct. Yes, it is, Councilman. And then the next would be the consideration of the rock wall that we saw last week, and then lastly, the, the single sheet that I put up before you with the recessed panel. In all cases, they would have the, the bar railing on the top of, of top of the parapet walls.
Did you say that there was any additional cost for the brick option versus the stone?
No, no options on that. There was a comment by Matthew Jones this evening when I spoke to him. He said that the recessed panel wall may end up being cheaper because it is a simpler form process than the, either the brick or the stone, but there is not a real cost difference between these, these items, other than the, the fact that he did comment the parapet wall that his recessed panel may end up costing less.
So each, just so I can get this in my head, is each of the bridge supports, there's gonna be a, it'll be sectioned with brick all the way across? Is that right? Each, each area?
There, there, there's nothing that's, that are gonna be done to the bridge supports.
So they're just gonna stay open like they are now?
Yes, they're, they're gonna stay open, yes.
Okay.
Why couldn't we have brick on that as well as across the bridge?
Structurally and time-commitment-wise, it wasn't gonna be possible.
But first thing, let's make sure that we're all in agreement that, with the recommendation that, of the sidewalk brick pattern, that everyone in agreement to that? That's a simple one, I think. So we'll get that one out of the way. Let the record show that the council was in agreement for the sidewalk brick pattern, with the herringbone pattern.
I'm not, I'm not quite yet. I wanna figure out what we're gonna do with the rest of the bridge and then come back to the sidewalk, 'cause I may want to have my vote say I want the bricks reversed.
Reversed, what do you think?
Well, this is the brick, and are we gonna have the tan option too, or we're just gonna have the red?
No, you just look at the brick.
The pattern.
The pattern, yes. The, the, the other pattern that you see in the picture is, is not, not available.
Not, okay.
That strip is not.
That strip is not available like on the outside.
It's just the herringbone for the, for the brick pattern.
But is it gonna be that color?
Yes.
Okay, that's what I was saying. Could it be the other color instead?
I don't know why it wouldn't. I mean, it's just color, so.
Okay. Well, the only reason I was asking if it's the other color, potentially, is if we go with the stone wall or the brick wall, as to what color we're gonna make the stone wall and the brick wall. I'm just color coordinating.
We're trying to accessorize here.
Trying to accessorize and make it look right.
It is worth pointing out that when you're on the bridge, walking on the sidewalk, you won't be able to see the pattern on the exterior of the bridge.
Exactly, but you will be able to see the rails.
Okay, yes.
Rails are gonna be the same, though, regardless of whatever material we choose.
Yeah, but we got a color.
Okay, so you, you wanna hold that until the?
Hold that just a second. Let's figure out what we're gonna do with the other part of it.
Everyone in agreement to holding that pattern?
Just a, just a minute.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay. I guess now we're down to brick?
Brick, stone, or recessed panel.
And again, said brick could be one color.
Yes.
On the outside. Are we looking at using the same color?
That was the assumption, yes.
That's what I'm getting at, are we using the same color?
I'll, I'll maybe see if we can't kind of be direct in this discussion, maybe kind of sidetrack that discussion. I still particularly prefer the stone wall.
I prefer the stone, too, but I'm just asking if we go down the brick path, which, which color brick are we getting?
Didn't they say that the brick, whatever color they, brick color, would match the existing brick color that we have?
On the roundabouts.
In the roundabout.
That's correct. They'd match the brick, brick roundabout color with the brick sidewalk.
Right, and so it might be hard to discern on your picture, like actual color.
If it's the same brick that we're using in the roundabout that we're using on the sidewalk, and then we're using on the wall. That's what I was getting at. Which one, are we using the same brick on all of them?
Which is the same as what we've got on our roundabouts?
Yes.
I think that's a given, is it not?
Yeah, the roundabouts and the sidewalk are what we're talking about, keeping the same brick, the herringbone. Pattern in the brick walls you've seen in the pictures.
Okay, so what does it lead us to next, then? Either the stone or the brick?
Stone, brick, or recessed panel.
I'm sorry?
Stone, brick, or recessed panel.
What's the preference of council?
I'm already on that boat.
You said the stone, right?
Ken, do you?
The, the stone at this end.
Robert? We'll only need one more stone.
Stone.
Okay, stone it is.
Okay, so we're herringbone pattern with stone walls, and that's it?
Councilman Green raised a question. In these pictures, it looks like the stone is just a little different between the two representations you gave us.
It is. That, the one on the bottom was just a picture that he wanted to show of the stone wall with the railing system. Thing else, other than to show the stone railing system, um, the railing system on top of the stone wall. Okay, and again, they said that they would add color to the, this, to the stone, but you don't need to worry about that. They're gonna pick a stone color, and we don't need to worry about it.
Color's gonna be stone color.
Stone color, yeah. All right, and lastly, just for, this is FYI, we had some, especially Councilman Mock and I, had some discussions about the relative, the, I guess, the, the girders underneath the bridge. The last page that you've got, they showed us, this is the Harper Road Bridge over forty. What Matthew said, and I've just copied and past his, his text into this picture, this is essentially the same profile that you're gonna have for parapet wall, railing system, and girder, except in this case, this girder that you see here is twice as, as tall as the, the girder that we're gonna have on Williams Road. So you can imagine in your mind, if you cut that girder down half the size, the profile of the bridge is gonna look very similar. Okay, that's it.
You've got everything you need from us.
Yes, stone pattern, red, herringbone sidewalk. Got it.
Anything else from council concerning the aesthetics of the bridge? Maybe this will be the last opportunity that we'll have to wrestle with this.
I know we still have medallions coming up.
That is coming up. The medallions, what was the?
Oh, the medallions, we just have to provide them the, oh, yeah.
Oh, Lord.
We're gonna have to provide what we want the medallions to look like, so I'm sure we'll have another round of that.
And determine how many.
Yes, well, we're up, we, we adopted six now, so when the resolution.
No, we didn't adopt six.
Well, when you passed the resolution, it said six.
No, we didn't, we, the, the discussion we had at the briefing session was that we were gonna go ahead and approve the two hundred and eighteen thousand dollars for the improvements that we wanted made, but we were leaving open final determination of the number of medallions.
Okay, do we know now how many we want?
No, that's why we left it open until further discussion.
Okay, I don't know how long that discussion can stay open, though.
Well, I know we haven't had subsequent discussions, so.
As the timing is such that we can bring this up at briefing rather than at, at the regular council meeting.
I really, with their attitude about needing to get this kind of thing, they need to plug in all the information that they can to it.
So you're needing a?
I, it would really help if, if we knew if it was four, six.
And we also have to determine, is it going to be the rolling mill?
That's true, but that's, that can wait, but they, they're looking for what goes into the bridge right now.
Okay, we'll just, let's get this thing done. It's, what's the preference? Well, actually, I guess it'd have to be at least a minimum of four, and it could be six total. Is that correct?
I mean, the que, the question is, the difference is eight thousand dollars, because they're four thousand, four thousand bucks a pop.
Yep.
So do we wanna go ahead and do three across on each side, or do two across facing traffic on each side? And that pretty much is the?
That's, those are our options.
Or, or we could do one in the center.
Yep.
On each side.
Who wants to lead this discussion?
My preference is all six. Worst-case scenario, the one in the center. I'm not for two on each side.
You like the one in the center?
Facing traffic.
Yeah, 'cause that leaves off the third one, which then looks funny, that you got two over here, two over here, and you got the one on each corner opposite, off. I'm either for the one in the center or all six.
Well, I, I personally, I don't think the one in the center would, would achieve what we're looking for, really and truly. I think it'd be a missed opportunity. I'll go along with all six. Ed?
I'm being, I'm being cheap tonight. I, I, four thousand dollars is a lot of money for a medallion in my mind, but I was gonna say one in the center on the both sides. One in the center, you know, each direction. You'll have two, basically, eight thousand dollars.
Yeah.
Versus twenty-four thousand dollars for six.
Well, maybe it'd have to be more than, than two.
They're, they're four thousand apiece, aren't they? Isn't that right?
Uh-huh.
Yes, I think so.
Okay.
Six of them would be twenty-four thousand.
So we got, we got two for over the six, one, one for two, this side of the room.
With great appreciation for the aesthetic preferences of the mayor and our mayor pro temp, I still like the sixteen, almost, actually, the sixteen thousand dollar savings by only going with one in the center.
Okay. Are you keeping tally of the, of the, okay. Dr. Satter?
I just would like to have, when we talked about this before, the two hundred and eighteen thousand dollars, what is our, what percentage of that are we having to pay? If the General Assembly comes through?
If the General Assembly comes through, we'll, we'll be paying zero.
Okay, 'cause I thought when it was first presented to us.
Wait a minute, are we, am I correct on that?
Yeah, it could be as much as one hundred percent paid, and I think that's the request, so I, that's the way, that's.
It could either be zero or a hundred percent, right? Somewhere in between.
It could be.
Or, or something in between.
Yeah.
Right, that's what I'm saying. The in-between number, where I remember when we first, when I was first called about this, I was told that there was some in-between option.
Yeah.
I just don't remember what it is.
They had originally told us from the DOT it was gonna be potentially a third.
Okay, all right.
But it's either zero.
Right.
All of it, or now somewhere in between, depending upon where the two sides of the house.
Right, right.
Decide.
Right, yeah.
Could be one gives us half, and the other one doesn't give us half.
Sure, yeah.
Or they give us a part of that, right?
Well, I don't think a part of it.
I mean, is that one of the possibilities of?
Oh, yeah, they could, they could always, you know.
That's what I thought. That's what I thought.
That, that was the understanding I had, that it would be, I'm sort of agreeing with Dr. Satter here. That was the understanding.
Yeah, that was the original.
It could be.
A third.
Yeah.
That's what they told us originally, a third, and then they come back and they were asking for all hundred percent.
Okay.
There is, there is one other thing that I think that the sidewalk itself and the cost of it could be.
Right.
We could utilize power bill funding for that, so.
Right.
That, that particular portion of it.
Right.
Would not be subject to the town having to curate.
Right.
Excuse me. The, the budget amendment that you did last week was not involving power bill.
We can make amendments to the amendments.
Think how, how large would this medallion be? Do you have any idea? I know the picture.
You actually, in the pictures I gave you, you have a pretty good shot of the one that, one of the ones that Kerry did. It's on page two. It's, that is their medallion on, on one side of the bridge, and I guess relative sizes, you know, you know where it goes on the, those supports.
On the support.
So it's, it's gonna be no larger in diameter than, than what that face of that support is, but I'm not sure what that is. Yeah, it's probably three or four feet.
Did we get your recommendation, Dr. Satter?
I'm, I'm still trying to get a visual in my, in my mind about this.
Madam Clerk, where do we stand as far as the options and numbers for each?
Two and two?
Two and two.
You didn't ask Robert yet.
I thought you said, I'm sorry. Your preference?
You might get another two and two.
I'm for just two in the middle, each side. Two.
Two. So you and, you and Mac are in concert with this?
An add.
An add.
An add, okay.
Yeah.
Well, it's got, it's, it's gonna be this end of the table, probably, 'cause I think in my mind, I can see how going either direction, that will catch somebody's eye, if you have it in the center. And it, and, and then you don't have, it's not a balance issue, then. If you do two and two, I, I agree with Senator, you gotta balance, potential balance, 'cause it'll pull your eye. If they're right in the middle, that's all you're gonna see. You're never gonna, you know, you won't miss not having those there. So I'm gonna go with these guys, and that guy down there. Thank you, sir.
Four to two, then, so you got your answer.
Two total, one in each, on each center, support on each side.
That's right.
Okay, got it, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Let me ask something. If we come up with the whole money, what do we do with what's left?
We put it in the bank.
They'll ask for it back.
They'll probably ask for it back.
You're not getting any more than what?
I wouldn't be surprised if it's not something like what we do. It's, you pay on receipt.
Yeah.
The money to get the two eighteen, if you recall, we were asking, and the money goes to the DOT, and whatever they need from us on our part out of that two eighteen, if, if they don't need anything, if we get the whole two eighteen, we're good to go. We don't have to put out any money. But if we, if they, they do not come up with the full two eighteen, they bill us after the project is complete. They send me a bill.
No, I'm worried we get the two eighteen, we turn it over to the DOT. Do they get to keep the sixteen?
I doubt it.
I, no. I, no. We don't.
I mean, that's what I'm saying.
No, I doubt the DOT gets to keep what's left over either.
Okay.
No.
That's why I just want to make sure our 16 didn't go, that was going towards our project, doesn't go to somebody else's project.
Well, ultimately, it probably will, but.
I think, I don't think the pot is going directly to that particular DOT. I think it's just in the kitty for enhancements.
Okay.
That's my take on it, I don't know.
Good question, though. All right, are we straight?
Stone, herringbone, one, two medallions, one on each side, in the center.
Black rails.
Black rails.
And briefly, I know this sounds like a lot of money to a lot of folks, and it is, but thank you, council, for taking this move, because we're investing in our community. We're investing in something that's going to last 50 or 60 years, makes a statement about who we are, that we're willing to have pride in our community. So I'm really very heartened by the action that we've taken tonight.
Well said.
And I think, I think we agreed, I believe we have already agreed that that, the sidewalk would be on the north side of the bridge.
That's correct.
The boon side, as I call it.
Yes, that's exactly right.
Okay.
For the, for information, I think I've shared this with all council, but the requests from the General Assembly, it's all paperwork, request, everything is in the, it's in the proper channels now, and so we're waiting for the results. Next item?
Okay, the next item is a reminder that we have the North Carolina League of Municipalities Annual Conference for 2014. It's coming up. It'll be Saturday, October 11th through Tuesday, October 14th. And it is at the Corey Convention Center in Greensboro, and registration deadline is September 19th, 2014. And then lastly, this evening, we do have a selection for who would be primary and alternate delegate for the purposes of voting at the business meeting.
Okay, I guess first off, we need to know who's going to attend?
Yes, sir.
The conference. Council, if you've given consideration to your attendance at that or not?
Sunday, Monday.
So you will attend?
Sunday, Monday.
Okay, all right. Anyone else going to attend?
Scheduled to attend.
I'm going to attend also, so you want to be the primary?
No. Yeah, I'll do it.
Joyce, when's the business meeting? Do you have a schedule?
It's on Monday, I think.
Is it Monday?
Yeah.
Okay, then, all right, I was afraid it might be Tuesday, and then it'd be a problem for you, but it is Monday?
Yeah, it is Monday. It's Monday morning. Does he also need to say what he's going to do Monday afternoon? Do you need that too?
Well, I can get that from his phone, I just know right now that you're attending. That's all I need at this moment. And I need to know who's going to be primary and alternate, and we'll take care of everything else outside of this meeting.
There's two bus tours again. There's two tours with it. Okay.
I'm not going on the tours. I'll tell you that now.
I'll be the primary then, or do you want to be?
The tour's in the afternoon on Monday, so.
Oh, okay, I think this is right before lunch.
Yeah.
As far as the business meeting. Why don't you be the primary?
I'll be the primary, he'd be the secondary.
I'll be the alternate.
Means you got to play golf Saturday.
I'm going to play golf.
I'm just kidding.
Neither am I. Okay, is that all you need from us on the, on the conference? All right, very good. Any other items of business?
No.
Okay. That brings us to the eighth item on our agenda, which is the final opportunity for the public to make comments as a part of, for the good of the order. It's just like before, we, the same rules apply. If anyone in the audience would like to address council over anything that's been conducted, business that's been conducted tonight, or any other issue that you might have, ask that you come forward, you state your name and your address into the microphone, limit your comments to three minutes. Is there anyone that'd like to address council at this time? Okay, and we do have the forums available for written comments, if you'd like to use that method. So we'll close the public comments, and we'll turn it to any comments from council at this time.
I just wanted to, Mike said it earlier, I just want to congratulate the Historical Society. They've, I know they've worked very hard, and I encourage folks that have never been, I had not been until probably, it's been a few weeks ago, maybe a couple months ago now, to go over and see the place. And I don't want to say that you can just go unannounced, you have to get, I think you have to get an invitation because of construction and things going on, but it's something to see, and I congratulate you in your work. And I, I think the look on y'all's face tonight was priceless, so it was nice, so.
Go forth and restore.
Very good. Okay, if there's no other comments from council, we do have a closed session that we're going to go into from, at this point in our agenda. Would you make the announcement, and we'll follow that with the motion?
Would be to go into closed session pursuant to North Carolina General Statute, Section 143-318, Point 11, Prence A, 5, to establish or to instruct the public body's staff or negotiating agents concerning the position to be taken by or on behalf of the public body in negotiating the price and other material terms of a contract or proposed contract for the acquisition of real property.
Okay, and I so move. Do we have a second? Do we have a second? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we will be adjourning into, well, not adjourning, but we'll go into closed session at this time, may certainly inform the public that as we come out of closed session, we will be taking no actions in the closed session, any action that might be considered would be in the public meeting, but we don't anticipate actions to follow. So we thank you for your attendance tonight, if you don't want to sit and wait for us. So we appreciate it very much, you being here. Good luck to our boy scout troop and your endeavors, and we'll hope to see you again in the future. So we'll adjourn to the council room.